We now call the city council meeting to order. We now will pay attention to council member Palija for the invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you are able.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have as our guest Pastor Raymond Berry. He was born in Rochester, Pennsylvania, and following his high school, he served four years in the United States Air Force as a medical corpsman and was honorably discharged in 1973. After serving his country, he pursued an academic career at Washburn University, where he graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Corrections. Pastor Berry retired from the United States Postal Service, of which he was employed for 31 years. After retirement, Pastor Berry began working as chaplain for Midland Care Connection, where I met him, and I believe he's done great work, and where he has worked for 12 and a half years, and since retired in August of 2017. Pastor Berry served as assistant pastor for 12 years at Faith Temple Church of God in Christ. In September of 1989, Pastor Berry founded Gethsemane Church of God in Christ, and now known as Gethsemane Worship Center, where he has pastored for 29 years. Please welcome Pastor Berry to our meeting.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Trout, and city council members, thank you for this opportunity on tonight. Now normally, I would warn you that it's a dangerous thing to give a preacher a mic.[103.32][103.32](Laughter). My intentions to be brief on this evening. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you blessed us to see. We thank you for the use and activity of our limbs. Father, we thank you for our sound mind. We thank you for this meeting tonight, and for those who have taken time out of their busy schedules to show an interest in affairs of the city of Topeka. We thank you for the city officials who give of their time to make Topeka a better place to work and to live. We pray that you would look upon them, for they're charged with the task of making decisions that will impact the citizens of Topeka. With that in mind, we pray that you would give them listening ears, that they may hear the concerns of the people. We pray that you would give them understanding hearts, that they may empathize with those who present tonight. We also pray that you give them wisdom, that they make the correct decisions. And Father, we pray that after all the business has been addressed, and that they're on their way home, that you would give them peace of mind in knowing that the decisions that they made on tonight were in the best interest of all of those who live in Topeka. We ask these blessings in thy name. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Berry. Please extend our warm regards to your wife, Mrs. Berry, who's amazing. We now proceed to presentations. The first presentation, if the clerk would read.
We have a Shawnee County Health Status Update.
Well, I would like to welcome Linda Oakes to come to the podium. One of the things that we have been trying to do between the city and the county is work as a partnership and a team, and Linda approached me a while back, and she, with Dr. Pizzino, and we had a great conversation about making sure that the city council remained informed on things that are happening with the health of our citizens. And this is one of those departments where absolutely the Shawnee County Health Agency is the City of Topeka Health Agency as well, and they want to make sure that we have discourse. This is the first presentation, and they would hope to hear if you would like more information after they present to you a brief synopsis of what they've been up to, and provide us some information. So without further ado, Ms. Oakes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff members. Dr. Pizzino, our county health officer, and I are here to update you about our activities, here how we can help you, and discuss your possible role in promoting health in our community. So this is the first of what I hope will be regular updates. I don't necessarily want to set like the first Thursday or Tuesday of every other month, because things come kind of sporadically. So when we have information we think you'll be interested in, we'll contact you, and if you have things you want from us, please let us know. So I just want to talk a little bit about some of our programs very briefly. You probably already know that we give immunizations, and I want to give a shout out to the mayor. She got her flu shot today. I saw it on Facebook, so good job. Everyone needs to get their flu shot. We also offer the Women Infant and Children's Program, the WIC program, that provides nutritional support for young families. And did you know that 50% of all babies born in Topeka and Shawnee County are on WIC? So we see a lot of those young citizens. We license all the childcare facilities in Topeka and Shawnee County. Our maternal and child health program will be partnering with several community organizations to host a community baby shower on November 3rd to educate young parents about safe sleep. Portable cribs, diapers, and wearable blankets will be given away at the event while supplies last. Another program that you may not be so aware of is our communicable disease program. We investigate all reportable communicable diseases that happen in our community, mostly pretty quietly and behind the scenes. Just to give you an example, we've had several chickenpox, varicella cases this year. One chickenpox case, we had to make 80 to 100 phone calls, and it took about 22 hours in staff time. So as you can imagine, they can be quite involved. Another area I want to touch on is our Community Health Outreach Empowering Division. Greg Barnes, I'm going to stand up, Greg, who is our division manager for that area. A lot of our community work happens in this area, and you will be hearing more about some of their projects and collaborations at future meetings. We've been working with Monique Lade, with the Neighborhood Relations, to communicate our events to the Nextdoor app and Neighborhood Improvement Associations. So, and you may have seen some of our events on the Nextdoor app. We're really excited to be able to use that method of communication. We also have staff members from the Health Department serving on Momentum 2022 Groups, the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, the Mayor's Task Force on Domestic Violence, Safe Streets, the East Topeka Advisory Council, and as well as several Heartland Healthy Neighborhood Work Groups. And you may recall, Heartland Healthy Neighborhoods is our grassroots health coalition, has been working for several years on issues identified in past community health needs assessments, which, by the way, we're updating right now. We've been doing surveys, hosting roundtables, and a town hall meeting to gather information for the next community health needs assessment, and that will be published in the spring. We've been doing that in partnership with Stormont Vale Health. So my question to you is, how can we help you? So what other community groups would you like us to be involved in? Is there data besides the county health rankings that we brought to you in the spring, we'll be bringing in next spring, that we could research for you? Or would you like a deeper dive into some of those findings? And I will mention, we have a new epidemiologist at the Health Department, and she's right now working on a data brief on infant mortality, which is an issue that has come up in the community health needs assessment and the community health improvement plan. So I do very much welcome your suggestions and questions about these and other areas of health. And so now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. John Franco Pizzino, our Shawnee County Health Officer. He's going to talk to you about your role as health strategist. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm John Franco Pizzino, I'm the county health officer for Shawnee County Health Agency, which means I'm also your county health officer, because Topeka is in Shawnee County. I hope I'm not going to disappoint anybody by saying that I'm not going to spend a lot of time with numbers today. This is not the reason I'm here. We do come back with numbers, usually March, because that's when the county health rankings gets released every year. I do want to remind you a couple of items. We have about 35% of citizens in Shawnee County that are obese, and we have about 16% who smoke. We have about 7% of babies that are born too small. So we have problems. However, we are fifth in the state for clinical care, for quality of and access to clinical care. So 15th in the state is pretty good, right? So what's the problem? Why are we here still talking about health and community health? Here is the problem, there are actually two problems with that. First is that clinical care alone is not going to assure that we have healthy communities. In fact, research showed that, shows that good access to clinical care and good quality of clinical care only account for about 20% of the overall health in a community, 20%. About 60% of health is related to a complex web of social, environmental, and behavioral factors. So the place where we live, the place where we work, and how we run our lives, our healthy or unhealthy behaviors. So that's the first problem, that just looking at clinical care is not going to be enough. The second problem is that we really can't present you with one scorecard of health for our community, because how healthy we are depends in large part on where within this community we live, our income, our education, and our race. And there is plenty of data to support that. And if you want to, we presented some of the data with the county health rankings. If you want to know more, we'll certainly be happy to go a little deeper. But just again, a couple of numbers. Black babies die in this county at about half the rate higher than white babies, and they are born small about twice as often as white babies. Over 30% of black children in our community live in poverty. That's more than twice the rate as white children in the same community. So why am I saying all these things to you today? The reason is very simple. The Shawnee County Health Department cannot fix that on their own. We just can't do that. You have a huge role, because you make policies for the city, and most of the people in Shawnee County live in Topeka, of course. How do policies affect health? Maybe more obvious in certain cases, but let me tell you, most of the policies you make, if you show policies to me, I'll be able to show you how that affects health, directly or indirectly. When you're talking about economic development, oh, you bet you're affecting health, because economy and poverty is one of the major predictor of poor health. When you're making policies about residential development, and how we can desegregate residential, where people live, that's one of the best predictor of life expectancy, is where people live, and how segregated that particular neighborhood, that particular census tract is. So I'm not talking, you know, large community, I'm talking at the census tract level, even smaller than a zip code. Transportation, what do you think is the main reason for people to miss a medical appointment? It's because they don't have transportation. What do you think is a major barrier for people to come out of poverty and have a secure job that can be sustainable? It's because they can't get to the workplace. Mayor is part of the Go To Pica Board of Directors, where I also have the honor of sitting, and we have just a presentation today about, this week, I'm sorry, about the major barrier the lack of transportation represent for people who want to work, say, in South Topeka, where major employers are. So for all practical reasons, from where I stand, you are public health officers, just as much as I am, because of the policies that you enact. You know, in the old days, we had vaccines that could get rid of infectious disease, and that's what people used to die from primarily. Today, we don't have vaccines against chronic disease of external determinants of health, but we have policies. And I'm here to argue that policies represent a vaccine that can bring resilience to our community against chronic disease and lifestyle issues. So we hope that you can reach out to us if you have any questions about any of the policies you are considering, whether there is an effect on that, or what that effect can be. If you have any work group, any committee where you can see a role for us, Shawnee County Health Departments, we'd be more than happy to work with you. We'll be back here also to keep you updated about activities in the agency. Any questions, anything we can help you with today?
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Please understand, I mean this in not in a disrespectful way, despite how it may sound. So you guys have a unique global view of all of the governmental entities in Shawnee County that are working on health. And given that we, as the city council, you know, economic development is handled by JADO, transportation is handled by Topeka Metro, you know, the school system has their own Board of Directors, I'm curious what you think, in addition to the advocacy work that you just described, what specifically you think we can do, what charge we can take up as the city council in order to help all of these other entities in our global efforts to move health forward? You know, and I realize many of us are involved in those other ones, so I don't want it to sound like we're going to shove transportation off on the bus service and that sort of thing. We have roles on that, too. I'm just curious if, in your global view, there are specific things unique to this body that only we can do, that we should focus on primarily, in addition to working with those other bodies and advocating? I totally, wholeheartedly agree with you, public health is a huge thing that we should work on in all of the work that we do. And you don't have to answer tonight if you're not sure what specific things we could do, but I certainly wouldn't want our, the things that only we can do to fall by the wayside because we're advocating for responsibilities that are generally handled by other bodies, if that makes sense.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate your point. I don't have a quick answer, I don't have a feeling that has anything to add. I think working with those bodies in conjunction is extremely important.
Yes, I agree.
And simple awareness of what's going on around those bodies is very important. Since you started by saying I don't want to be disrespectful, I'm going to start my next statement by saying I don't mean this in a disrespectful way, but just to give you an example, about a week ago, I think, there was a community health planning session that was part of a broader community health assessment the county is conducting, and it was the county health agency, and all members of the community and different agencies were invited. I don't think I've seen in that meeting anybody from the city council.
Oh, yes, we should definitely.
And that's just an example, again, if I know how busy you are, so please don't take that in the wrong way. But you asked for an example, there is one example.
Yes.
It would be wonderful to have had one of the council members, the mayor, involved in the meeting, and I know how many competing priorities you have on your agenda, but since you asked for an example, there is one.
And I think that I could add to that. I think that when we hear the words "social determinants of health," this is where the city has a lot of power. For example, when we are aptly working like we are on increasing our efforts with code enforcement and not allowing families to live in houses that are subpar, that is a significant way that we contribute in policies and all health. Another example is the fact that the city has taken the initiative of Complete Streets, in which we, through the planning department, are ensuring that our streets have sidewalks, and in addition to that, they also have bike pathways to make transportation, not only transportation in the vehicle, but also activities that provide exercise. That's another great way. Today, we just celebrated the opening and the completion of a close to two-mile circumference around Gage Park. The city did part of it, we had the federal government do part of it, we had the state do part of it, the county worked together, and now we have a place where individuals are able to walk and cycle close to their neighborhood. So there's many things that we can be enacting and working with. For example, the Neighborhood Empowerment Grants, and all the things that we can provide that provide a better quality of living for all of our residents, those are places where health is impacted, because those are policies that we can take a part of and ensure that we are moving forward, that work in tandem with what they're presenting to us, in addition to also participating maybe, in us having an understanding of which are committees, like the one that you just mentioned, that we could have a part of.
If I could follow, if you come up with anything else in addition to the other work, please feel free to reach out to me if no one else, and I would love to help you champion those, because I do think we have a unique role as a cog in the wheel, and I want to make sure that, especially the things that we can do, like the items that the mayor mentioned, that we especially are working on those, given that it's in our wheelhouse. Thank you.
I will add, too, that Police Chief Bill Cochran was at that town hall meeting last week, and the number one issue that came out of all that process is mental health, and he knows mental health. So I think law enforcement being involved is super great, and so I just wanted to give him a shout out, too, that he understands how mental health plays into all this. So we're going to be talking a lot about mental health in the next few years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my pencil out. What was your name again?
It's Linda Oakes.
Linda Oakes.
Yeah.
First, I have a comment. I think your baby showers that you guys do is awesome.
Great.
But one of the things that we can do as council members is help you get that word out. And if you don't know what it is, it is a baby shower, but it isn't. It's way above and beyond. And that's one of the things that I would like to see us do, is communicate better with our constituents. What the people walk away with, the women, the pregnant women, is fantastic, but the knowledge that they take away from there, and now they're bringing their significant others, they're bringing their families. I know you guys were doing it at, I call it East Avondale still, but it's not, the Net Center, Net Reach, and it looked like you guys were outgrowing that gym. And I would just like to see us get it out better, so they don't just think it's just for women, and they see that it is about educating, not only just educating the families. And I applaud you guys for what you're doing. I do get your emails, I'm on the list, so I get them, the meetings, I just, I'm usually at work, but I do try to keep up with that. But that's something all the council members, that we could do, is get that out to our constituents, so that everybody has a chance to go, and I'll let you speak on what they get when they show up that's free.
Actually, while supplies last, which we usually have pretty good supplies, they get a pack and play, which is a safe sleep crib. So a lot of people don't have a place for their baby to sleep. So a crib, the blankets that are all one piece, so the babies don't get tangled up in those, diapers, wipes, it's really hard when you can't afford diapers. And so those are the items, plus lots of education on safe sleep. I just saw, came out today, Kansas, the number of asphyxiation deaths in the state for infants is increasing, and that's a lot due to co-sleeping. So we're going to be doing a lot of education about safe sleep, and this is one of those vehicles we use for that.
You guys do a terrific job, but when I hear that there's, these pack and plays are like, what, I think it's the package is about 300 that they give away with everything together?
Yeah.
And when I hear that we still have those, and they're not giving them all away, there's an issue out there. And I didn't know how you regulate that with just pregnant women, because I know that there's some women that just, that would like it, but they have babies, so they don't meet that criteria. And I'd like for us to maybe look at that, like maybe a month, like between one and three months or something, but we got to get that word out. You know, we talk about the low to moderate income people, and that's just something that they could use for the first year, I believe. Is that correct?
And sometimes beyond, depending on how.
Yeah, so, and it's free, it's free, and you guys do a great job on marketing or getting that grant, or however you get it. We just need to get that education out there. Thank you.
If you follow us on Facebook, you can reshare our posts. We post all these things, we do events, and we're boosting a lot of our posts now, and that's a great way to advertise, so follow us on Facebook.
Additional comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, thank you, oh, yes.
If I may, Linda's comment reminded me of something that addresses Councilwoman Jensen's point about what can we do. Here is one area where you still have full responsibility and is strictly related to health, and that's public safety. Feeling unsafe in one's neighborhood is possibly the most important reason why people don't go out and exercise, and then will send their children out. Children don't walk to school, children don't go out and play outside after school. Now, I understand that assuring public safety is not that easy, but sometimes it's also perception, and it may not be the reality. So, but just to give you an example, if people don't feel safe, they will not go out and work out, and they will not let their kids do that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino. Thank you, Ms. Oakes.
Thank you. No problem.
Next item on the agenda, sales tax project update. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight, we have our Public Works Director, Jason Peake, here to go through our sales tax projects and provide an update for you.
Good evening, governing body. Actually, I'm here to present a new webpage that we put out for the city that is talking about the Fix Our Streets program, so people understand, basically, as we talk about renewal of the sales tax, what the change in plan is for that. And so I'm going to kind of go through this. This is available through our homepage on the kind of carousel bar, but it talks about our pavement management program. And we've talked to you guys about pavement condition index, we've talked to you about strategies, and we've talked to you about funding. And so this talks to the community, they can consume this information and find out, you know, those are three key components to our program. Also has a reminder about the upcoming vote on November 6th, as well as, this is a hyperlink to frequently asked questions. And then I think some neat parts about this is, we have a lot of interactive features with this webpage. You've seen this map before, but basically this, if you click on this explore, you can go to the PCI map over here, and basically drill in and find out the condition of your street, so it provides you information on that. I want to highlight some of the other things, because we've talked a lot about these with you. But we talk a lot about treatment strategies, and we've been kind of making the rounds to different civic groups and NIAs and neighborhood associations, talking about our program. This map is highlighting the micro-surfacing work that we've been doing as a preventative maintenance. Basically, the area in green is what we just wrapped up, a little over 80 miles of micro-surfacing that we did this year. The orange is what's currently going to be let with a contract for crack ceiling to start this year and continue into early 2019, and then we'll be micro-surfacing those streets in 2019, and then we'll be hitting the west side of town in 2019 and 2020. And so this kind of gives some text along those lines, helping explain this program. And then we actually are able to embed some videos. I don't know if any of you have seen these, this is micro-surfacing work, and the thing that I want to highlight about this, this is the 80 miles of surface sealing that's going on, and you can just see how quickly this application is going on. So this is basically the micro-surfacing machine, there's a hopper up here where all the material is kind of mixed, it comes back down through here, and it's being applied, and you see it's kind of chocolate brown color here. This other side of the street was applied a couple hours before that, and within about four hours, this is ready to be driven on. And it just, you know, it's a real cost-effective treatment that can be applied quickly and cover a lot of miles and extend the life of our streets. So you can look at the video there. Then we talk about, you know, you've seen this map before, but basically this represents all the streets that we funded through the citywide sales tax over the last 10 years, provide an explanation of that. And we talk about rehabilitation, basically milling overlays, we give some information about that treatment strategy. We get into reconstruction and just, you know, basically the complexity of having to go in and rebuild streets and have some before and after photos there. And then we also talk about, even with this program, just want to make sure we emphasize this point, we still will have potholes that we need to repair. And so we actually have a video on here that talks about our pothole repair process. Molly and her staff put this together, I think they did a really good job with it. So it'll start playing here in just a second. And so probably not going to have sound through this, but just what I want to kind of scroll through and show you is, think about, yeah, we're speeding up the camera, actually we've got really good staff that do this.
So at that speed, why can't we fix up a lot?
Exactly. But I just, a couple of things to point out here, right, is, look at the size of this hole, the amount of labor and resources that are going into fixing this one spot versus what you saw within the previous video about the micro-surfacing. And that's the key to preventative maintenance, is that if we're taking care of our streets at the right time, we're minimizing these repairs here, because once we let our streets get to a point that we're having to fix potholes, we're really just throwing money away. We've got to do it to keep the streets in a serviceable condition, but just addressing potholes is not improving our streets. So as you can see, the guys, basically, they cleaned out the hole, they applied this tack oil, that's basically the binder or the glue that will then hold the asphalt that gets placed in the hole. And Molly does a really good job, if you've seen any of those home improvement kind of TV shows, if you watch that, that's really the kind of feel, like, tell us what we're doing here. And Tony Trower, our superintendent, does a really good job of explaining it. You see, they're putting the hot mix in there, and then they'll basically get the compactor down to basically compact the hole. And just once again, want to emphasize, you can see the amount of effort it takes just to fix a pothole versus some of that preventative maintenance. We also have a slide in here talking about the funding, and just the importance of that renewal of the citywide sales tax. You've seen this before, it represents about 52% of our program budget. It talks about, you know, that we have some funding from the countywide. We also highlight the fact that the general fund and the commitment by this council to add general fund money to the pavement management programs reflected in there. And then we've got links to budget, and then some newer information we haven't shared with you here, but this is we haven't shared with you here, but this is kind of talking about the process or the modeling efforts that our staff does to kind of identify projects. And, um, what this is, is this is a graph, basically, once we know the PCI goal the community has, the funding level that we'll have, uh, we put this in and, and look at what's the most effective allocation of those resources, and, uh, that's basically what this highlights, is, um, you can see that, you know, in twenty nineteen, we need to spend a little over seventeen million dollars on asphalt street reconstruction, and we need to spend about two point four million on that surface seal and patching operations. And, you know, if you put the amount of miles that we're gonna do, the size of these graphs would be flipped, right? I talked about, we did about eighty miles, uh, with that, uh, little under, um, three million that we had this year, uh, versus, you know, we're gonna get about seventeen or twenty miles of reconstruction with those dollars. Uh, and this kind of helps us as we complete the projects, and then we coordinate with utilities and our other partners to look at how we're investing that money, um, over the forecast, basically to achieve the PCI goal. And then, we kinda have a, a chart here that shows, uh, basically a comparison that, you know, if the citywide sales tax was not renewed, so you're looking at two, uh, aggregate levels of our PCI. The blue line would be, assuming that the, uh, sales tax gets renewed by twenty twenty-one, we're forecasting that we could be above that sixty goal that council set as a PCI. And we also talked about that aspirational goal of getting up to seventy, so we're, we're starting to make progress, but you will see there's a decline. And part of that, we, we talked about, we have this backlog of streets in really poor condition, so that's reflecting the, those poor-conditioned streets getting worse, and we're investing more dollars, uh, to, to take that reconstruction out, and then you start to see a bump as we get in, uh, to the out-years of basically replacing those streets and moving that PCI upwards. The bottom line basically tells the story, if the citywide sales tax, we lost fifty-two percent of our budget, uh, that basically, um, we can, uh, see a little bump up to fifty-six in twenty twenty-one, and then we start to see a significant decline. And basically, you know, after ten years, we'd be below where we are today with our PCI. So, just reinforcing how important it is for us to kinda know, uh, what our budget is to effectively allocate those resources. And then, we put another couple of charts in here, and just remember, green means good, uh, the yellow to, um, light green is fair, and orange to red are our streets in poor condition. Uh, the top graph is basically showing the amount of inventory of our streets we'd have in those conditions, uh, without renewal of the sales tax. So, you basically see our streets that are in need of replacement are, are increasing. We're still allocating money to keep our roads in a good condition, but that backlog is, is really getting worse, that's what that story is telling. And that basically, if, you know, we're able to renew it, we're still gonna have those streets that need to be reconstructed, uh, but we're able to increase the overall condition of our streets as we're able to allocate money, uh, to removing that inventory of bad streets. And just two numbers over here, about twenty percent of our streets would be at the end of their life, uh, without the renewal of the sales tax, uh, compared to a little, uh, under five percent with the renewal. And then, this is probably what I'd say is the, I think, the neatest, uh, feature, uh, within the webpage, and, gonna get this out of the way. And so, this is coming back, um, to the PCI map that we talked about earlier. So, remember, reds are streets in poor condition, orange to yellow is fair, and green is good. And you can basically take this scroll bar, and this is saying that with renewal of the sales tax, as I'm moving across, you can basically see that we're starting to turn the city green. So, I mean, that expectation of fixing our streets, I mean, this is what we're able to do, uh, with that investment, you know, over, uh, the next ten years. And so, I encourage people to go out and take a look at this website, interact with it. Uh, it's a lot of great information that our staff put together. Once again, you can see, that's where we are today, and this is where we are looking ten years down the road. So, we're really excited to kinda share this information and just have this as kind of a, a static piece, and then we'll update it as we do projects. All this is linked to our GIS information, but I just think it's a great tool to tell our story of, of how we're fixing our streets in Topeka. And with that, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Dr. Peake, thank you for all your work. I think that it's, it's commendable, that not only are we presenting our community with, with, not only with full reports and accountability with regards to where and how the dollars are going to be used, but for them to have an interactive modem, that they can look exactly how the progress is going to happen, is, is phenomenal. So, thank you for all that work. Um, I see Councilwoman Hiller.
Just a quick question and comment. That, what you just displayed for us is all sources of income and is the entire street maintenance and improvement program, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that. It's, it's been a long time coming to get to this point where we can, I, I, and the technology has helped, I'm sure, but to have the data in hand and the projections that we're confident on, in fact, those look better than the last ones we got, I think, and, um, but to see it all in one place at one time, so that we really can get, literally get our arms around what's happening, thank you. It's great. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, Dr. Peake, I think you have wowed us off.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz.
How would, if somebody wanted to know where their street was, I mean, you know, on the list, or, how, how would they find that?
So, we have the capital projects that basically reflect what's approved within the CIP, so they can go to that project portal.
Okay. And not necessarily this one?
No, this is more just talking about the overall program.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Great question. Seeing none, thank you very much. We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Cortez?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
President?
May?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We now move into the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
A is denial of a tort claim appealed submitted by Marsha Chaney in the amount of one thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents for alleged damage to a vehicle from hitting a pothole. B are minutes of the regular meeting of October second, twenty eighteen, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Lesser, we have a second by the deputy mayor, are there comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed with votes.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action items, starting with action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is approval of funding recommendations by the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Advisory Council in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the twenty nineteen special alcohol fund.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last week, we heard the presentation, and we were able to ask questions of Mr. Max Wilson regarding the selections for this grant, uh, and the grant recommendations that the selection committee has made. If there are any questions, Mr. Wilson is here again tonight.
What is the pleasure, deputy mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval, we have a second by Councilman, Member Emerson. Seems like we have a question, Councilwoman, uh, clear.
Yes. For Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
For Mr. Max.
Hi, Sonny.
Hi.
Do you know, or can you tell us, has, has alcohol use in youth increased or decreased? Do you see that this, that these programs are helping?
Yes, I think they are. We, we have the Community's Care Survey, which is done statewide, and all five Shawnee County districts participate in that survey, and the indicators are like, thirty-day use is down slightly, uh, lifetime's use is about level, uh, we are seeing a little bit of spike in marijuana. Uh, marijuana's always been high in Shawnee County compared to the other counties and, except for the metropolitaries like Kansas City, Kansas, and Wichita, Johnson County. Uh, but we're, we're staying up there in marijuana. We haven't seen an increase in opiates, which many of the, many of the cities, larger cities especially, are experiencing now, and, uh, normally, it starts in the west coast, goes the east coast, and it filters back to the Midwest. Uh, but I think we've got a good, uh, handle on opiates compared to many, many places, because our medical folks are really on top of it, and if you try to get any pain meds anymore, it's tough.
Mm-hmm. So. All right, thank you.
Additional comments or questions for Mr. Wilson? Seeing none, thank you so much for your service. We have a motion, and we have a second in front of us. If there's no additional comments or questions, we proceed with voting.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, establishing a date for a public hearing concerning the adoption of a plan pursuant to the Neighborhood Revitalization Act, KSA twelve dash seventeen, one fourteen S.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, we had a presentation regarding the renewal of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. From that, we had a responsibility to go out and talk to the other governing body, uh, members that would be affected by this decision. And tonight, Planning Director Feinder is here to give you a report on the process that he's gone through as we move, ask you to approve the setting of a hearing date for approval of this.
City manager. Mr. Feinder.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, your honor, governing body. Um, good evening. The process, uh, that we embarked on after we presented to you in May this year was to go out and meet with, actually, we had nine taxing entities we met with, uh, in June and July. Um, I would categorize those conversations, those consultations as going very well. We, um, we had a lot of support, particularly from Five-O-One, for the addition of infill housing, um, uh, element of this plan that would increase incentives for infill housing. Uh, they were very supportive of that county as well. There was some, uh, also some recommendations to make sure we try and communicate and contact with the, the new areas that are part of this plan, um, and so, the residents and the businesses and the property owners know that the, they're, they're within this area so that they can take advantage of the program. I'd say the only, um, we had some challenging questions from our, from our, uh, Seaman School Board, um, a couple, uh, just whether or not that this is a program that would, that they actually would need in their district. Again, those were, those were one or two, um, members of the board, so I, 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 that of all the nine are the only ones that we've really had some, some, I would say, challenging questions. All that being said, no changes have been made since we last presented this to you in May, uh, although I was made aware of, of a typo or two, uh, on the mill levy page. I unwittingly gave the city a massive tax cut today, uh, so I restored that, sorry about that. Um, so, yes, the, the mill levy numbers are correct now, so, um, but, um, no, other than that, uh, we would recommend you hold a public hearing in two weeks and, uh, adopt what was presented, uh, to you this year.
Thank you. And, and again, body, this resolution is only to approve the date in which we will have the public hearing. Um, should you have any questions or want to talk to Mr. Feinder with regards to any of the issues that he has presented to us, we have two weeks still to discuss these issues with him. Again, this is just for the public hearing. So, that being said, do we have question, deputy mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
Thank you.
We have a second by Councilwoman Clear, do we have, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, you might explain to the public why we said two weeks, because, uh, we usually don't meet in two weeks.
Correct.
Um, and I think that's very important, so there's no misunderstanding.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. The reason that we're not having a meeting during the next week is, the city council has been invited, the, the mayor, the city manager, and any council member that wishes to attend, to participate in the expedition over to Chattanooga. Um, this is an annual trip that we do, it's an inner-city visit, we get to meet with other leaders of other communities that have attained some of the goals that we wish to attain, and it helps us see what they have done that has been successful, and we're able then to bring that expertise back to your community. With that being said, the meeting started, I think, late, um, in the afternoon of Wednesday, and with the logistics, we have changed our meeting, and we're going to have a recess of meetings next Tuesday, but we will re-engage the Tuesday after, which is Tuesday, where we typically are off to have our next meeting. Thank you very much. Great point. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item C, if the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire fee title and a permanent easement for construction of the Soldier Creek Booster Pump Station Project Number T twenty-eight ten ninety-one.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Director of Utilities, Braxton Toplu, will prevent, present some information regarding this request.
Good evening, Mayor. City manager, council. Um, just as background on this, our north pressure zone has a single tower of about a half million gallons, and we have a single pump station, which is about one point five M G D. Um, that pump station is on Meriden Road, and it is in horrible shape. It was built late eighties, early nineties, it's one of the old pump stations where the pumps are down below ground, so if it rains like the monsoons that we've had, those pumps are submerged and are underground. So, we need to come up with a better location, and we need to come up with a, a place for a new pump station. So, the, uh, area that we have selected is on North Topeka Boulevard, just north of Soldier Creek. And the reason why we selected that is because it's the perfect location, because it already has substantial piping, exactly what we need, and that's because, back in the, uh, late eighties and early nineties, it was the location of a pump station. In two thousand, and, um, you can see, we actually have two sets of pipes right here. This is the site that we're talking about. Uh, down here is, you can just make out the berm for Soldier Creek, North Topeka Boulevard, and basically, we have the two sets of piping we need for both the suction side, so basically feeding the pump station, as well as the discharge side. So, that's the location, that's the site. You can see these big woolly overgrown trees, uh, tucked in there is the building that housed the old pump station. In two thousand, the city decided to surplus that property, that pump station. The pumps were in horrible shape, it was in disrepair, and for whatever reason, a decision was made to surplus it. Uh, at the time, according to the county records, that site was sold for ten thousand six hundred dollars to the De Becker family. Uh, this past year, we had the site appraised, it was appraised at five thousand dollars, and also, the appraiser appraised the permanent, uh, approach coming off of the road here for permanent access at five thousand dollars for a total of ten thousand. We had the city's, uh, real estate agent make an offer of ten thousand dollars for the site. That was rejected. We then turned around and made an offer of twenty thousand dollars for the site, that was also rejected. So, we are here tonight to talk about condemnation. And just as a starting point, condemnation has, because of the Kelo case, a very bad connotation. It leaves a bad taste in people's mouth. So, I just wanna clarify what condemnation is and isn't. Condemnation is not the city saying, "I want that piece of property," and then just taking it. Condemnation is a very formal process, it involves two hearings by you. Tonight is the first one, which is a resolution, and then in two weeks, an ordinance will come in front of you. If you pass both of those pieces of legislation, then the city attorney would be authorized to go and file a suit in Shawnee County District Court. The court would appoint three appraisers. Those appraisers are charged to hold a public hearing, view the site, and make a determination of the fair market value of that property. The city will have its opportunity to present its value of the property, obviously, we will rely very heavily on the appraisal that we had done. The property owner is also entitled to lay out his arguments in front of the court, or I should say, in front of the appraisers. After that hearing, the appraisers basically convene their own meeting, and the three of them decide what they believe the fair market value of that property is. At that point, they would issue an order, we would pay the money into the court, and then the property would vest to us. The property owner, if they were not satisfied with the amount, would have an ability to appeal to District Court and basically ask the judge to review the, the value. So, that is a whole lot of information in a very short period of time. I'm glad... I will gladly stand for any questions. I would respectfully ask that you would approve the resolution, so we can get this process moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Koppely. Councilwoman Clear has a question.
So this isn't a question of if the city will get the property, it's a question of how much?
If, if the city council approves both pieces of legislation.
Right.
And then the suit is filed, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So two quick questions is, are the people that live next door to this, is it, are they the ones who own the property as well, or is it a different?
No, it's the people next door that purchased the, the property when the city decided to surplus it.
So they basically don't want a pump station next to their house, is essentially the issue?
Well, I will point out that for decades, there was a pump station immediately adjacent to this house, and after the city surplus the property, the building is still there, but the pumps were removed.
So it would look the exact same as it does now, essentially?
No.
A small building tucked into the trees?
It would, my, my guess is we're going to have to remove the trees. It will be a larger building, it will look very much like the pump station that we did at Norwood. If you remember, two years ago, we did the CIP bus tour. So basically, a constructed building, not extremely large, but it would house the pumps on the ground level and not be down in basically a pit.
Do we need the entire tract of land? Or have you negotiated all this? I'm just asking.
I would think that we could get by with less than that, but I will defer to the acquisition agent of whether or not that question came up by the property owner doing, during their negotiations. And Mr. Allen and Mr. Collins are here if there are any specific questions about the negotiations.
Because I can totally understand from the, the point of the property owners, if, if they own the property next door that they bought to prevent this from happening now all of a sudden, the government's coming in and saying, "Oh, yeah, that thing you didn't want to happen, we're going to do it anyway."
Right, and I will point out that the property boundaries are on this map that I've shown, and see this orange boundary? This is what was sold in 2000 to them. This was the site of the pump station. And that, that this, of course, is individual's property. You see the property lines down here.
Okay.
Councilmember Mace, to be followed by Councilmember Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton, so looking at this map, is there, I mean, was the option looked into to locate it on the other side of the alleyway there, or grab a boat, whatever that is?
You mean, south, just immediately north?
Yeah, so just to the south of there. It looks like the same lines are running through there. Is that, I mean, would it, have we looked into that option as well?
We, we could look into it. My initial thought would be that we are within 500 feet of the critical zone of the Soldier Creek levy here, which would require the corps' approval. So not, it would be a challenge to do it. I'm not saying it would be impossible, but it would certainly add complexity and, and cost and time to the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Emerson.
Thank you, and I might add, I replaced the 12-inch main through Soldier Creek there about 10 years ago, and there's a, you can barely see the shadow, but there's a, a power line right in there as well, that runs the middle gap. But what I was actually going to ask is, in my experience with these, Mr. Koppely, if you guys take those trees down, you will do a lot of screening still on what'd be the west side of this property. Is that correct?
Correct. We've had a preliminary meeting with the planning department just to see what their thoughts were, because obviously, this will have to go in front of them and the governing body for a CUP, a conditional use permit, and certainly, planning did make it very clear that screening was going to be part of their requirements.
Yes.
With that, I would move approval.
Do, do you have a question that you would like to ask before approval?
If you don't mind. Is there, is there actually no other place this pumping station could go?
Well, I, I won't say there is no other place that it can go. Any other place that we have brings a significant additional cost to the city of Topeka, because, as I had pointed out, the thing that makes this site ideal is this double piping for your suction and discharge line. So if we were to go further north, anywhere else, we're also bearing the cost, not just of constructing a new pump station, but also of putting adequate, adequate water lines sized to be able to handle.
And you would expect that to cost more than what I expect will be a long legal battle to take this property? Because if they, I mean, if they're really that upset about it, that they, they didn't take twice as much money, then I would expect that we would have a legal battle on our hands that the corps to give them.
Well, and because this, this statute lays out the specific procedure for condemnation, it is not a long, drawn-out legal battle. It's very much.
Unless they appeal.
If they appealed, the title still vests in the city, and then the appeal would be to District Court over the dollar amount. So we would still be able to proceed with our project, and that would be a matter of the property owner, if they chose to appeal, and they absolutely would have that right, would be basically in front of the District Court judge, arguing why they, the appraiser's value was wrong, what they think the actual value would be, that that would not hold up the project, that would be.
I see.
In the future.
Okay, so, Councilmember Les.
Couple of quick questions. Now, you, you had said that the property, when it was purchased, was purchased from surplus from the city?
Yeah, the city sold it as surplus, because this was the site of the old pump station, and the value that it was sold according to the county records, and this tracks with the conversations that the property owner had with our acquisition agent, was $10,000. I think, believe the county records showed $10,600.
And at that time of the person, there, there was no type of conversations or negotiations, or there's no contractual obligations that, when they purchased that, that we made any type of commitment that we were not going to be in the future utilizing it for this type of purpose?
There was no reversionary clause in the deed, so.
Okay.
You know, it, and obviously, if we had it to do over again, I would certainly recommend not surplusing that property, but, you know, we, we are where we are.
Thank you.
And I, and I understand, this is a difficult policy decision, you know, in terms of, of a person's property and a public improvement project. I absolutely understand that, and that's why it is in front of you for that policy decision. You've heard my recommendation, my reasoning. Ultimately, it's your decision.
We did have a motion that I want to acknowledge by Councilmember Emerson. We have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Do we have any additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Just one brief one. Did I understand you to say that the pump station was there before the house was built?
I don't have the record of when the house was built, but obviously, the pump station had been there for some period of time, prior to it being surplused.
Right. Do you recall how old the pump station? You probably said, and I missed it.
I, I honestly don't know when that pump station was constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes, Mr. Jensen, but a no.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to the non-action items. The first discussion of a visual code update, if the clerk could read.
Is discussion of proposed amendments to the Topeka zoning regulations Title 18 of the municipal code regarding changes to non-residential design standards and landscaping and screening standards for new non-residential construction.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Director Feinder will go through some of the information related to changes that we would like to make in the code. They've been doing a lot of work on this, and this is something that has had a lot of discussion at various levels between the staff and also the planning commission. And so, excited to bring this forward. It's something that moves us in a direction of trying to improve the appearance of the community. Director Feinder?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, once again, governing body. Thank you, Dan. We're loading up here momentarily. So when people find out I'm the planning director for the city, among other things, the conversation doesn't take too long to turn to talk about appearance and aesthetics of our city. And I'm left, usually left at the end of that conversation with the impression that we can do better. And I, I would, I would agree. And so what we want to present tonight are a couple steps to, to go in that direction. I've got my comprehensive planning manager, Dan Warner, here tonight, who will also share in some of this presentation to tell you what, some of the contents of what this is. But we're presenting two things. One is a, a citywide, non-residential building design standard, and then also some updates to our landscaping code, which we, which we've had around for, since the early 2000s. So I'll go over the why and kind of the process that we got to this point before I hand off to Dan. And so as I said, so very, very simply, why are we doing this? We, we want to improve the aesthetics and appearance of our city. Two recent community surveys point this out. Momentum 2022 survey, only 15% of the respondents had us as above average or excellent in the aesthetic department. We had a subsequent survey earlier this year, our, what we call a visual appeal survey. I think some of you may have taken that. 96% of those respondents said building design is important, very important. So in summary, not doing very well with how we look, yet building design is a very important, important part of how we look. So with that in mind, we also have two policy documents. The Land Use and Growth Management Plan did recommend that we do, have improved design and site design standards for the community to, again, to increase our aesthetic appeal. And as I mentioned, Momentum 2022, one of their big goals, one of the major goals, is to create attractive and vibrant, vibrant places. They go one step further, it's very, it's, it's actually a fascinating read when you look at how our aesthetics play into our pride and our community attachment, and also our local economy. So we didn't score as high as we should probably in community attachment and pride. One of the three things that we can do to increase that is aesthetics, is improving how we look and how people, and how you view your community physically. And that not only increases our attachment and pride within the community, but drives local spending and recirculates dollars within the local economy at a much higher rate. So, so this is very, very important steps to take. To that end, planning department last year began a series of visual code updates. We didn't call it at that time when we, when we brought the downtown zoning update to you, but that really was the first step. It was to really begin, and that, that's our center of our community, that is the, the crown jewel. We want to, we, we want to take care of that first. So that's what we did. You passed the, some design standards for downtown. And so we want to expand upon that, and citywide, do the, basically the same thing, apply a minimum design standards for commercial buildings, update our landscaping, and then probably early next year, we will also are working on a comprehensive sign code update to improve the, the look of our, our sign, signs of the community. As I mentioned, we had a visual appeal survey earlier this year, images of buildings that were rated, very unappealing to very appealing and everything in between. Some interesting things that came out of that. One, a lot of people took it, and it was over 1,000 people, and almost half of those provided written comments. That, that's pretty unprecedented, and, and if you ever want to read 480 written comments, you're welcome to it. That was, that was crazy. Again, 96% said building design is very important or important to the appeal of the community. One other thing that we found out that we, we did, was a surprise. We asked for what are the most important factors in, in building appeal? And a, a very close second was landscaping. Well, landscaping isn't part of the building, so when you see all these comments and as how, as high as this was rated, we went back and said, "We probably need to take a look at our landscaping code. Is it, is it having the intended effect? Can we do anything more?" And so we'll, we'll show that to you later on in the presentation, the changes would be. Okay, before I hand over to Dan, just, you know, touch on the process that we went through. So we've been beta, beta testing our design standards for about two years now. What does that mean? We had a set of design standards for buildings drafted a few years ago, and the timing, that probably wasn't right, but what we did is we took those, and as projects would come to us, new buildings, we would look at those and say, "Do those meet those standards, or don't they?" And through that process, we refined it, calibrated it, and, and what's before you, or what's being proposed for, before you, about 75 to 80% of those projects that, that would come through the door now are going to meet those standards. And so what this is telling us is, first of all, we refined it so it's not as restrictive, but we, we kind of set up, that is the, that is where the development community is going. It's already going there. And so what we're going to try and do with these standards is, is bring up the 20 to 25%, the, the weaker links in the chain, to then make that more uniform across the board. I talked about the visual appeal survey. We had a technical committee. This is very technical. They were five design professionals, five architects, that, that Dan had the pleasure to, to lead in a series of meetings, totally instrumental in where we are today. We would not have a, a set of guideline, a set of standards before you without them. They really were our bridge between staff, the city, and the development community, because their clients are the ones that they work for, and they are most attuned to what is feasible and not feasible, and what is most realistic, and still having a good design aesthetic in the community. We had a development forum, a large number of people attended that in the development community, and then we had our series of planning commission meetings over the last year, five. So that's, that was our process. We had not had, and I'll, I'm sure this would be asked, but we, we have not had any, any sort of negative comments, pushback, and a lot of it has to do with the work of the technical committee, creating something that is flexible and, and, and still raises our standards. So I'm going to have Dan come up and talk more about what is in it. So, Dan?
So the design standards are meant to be prescriptive. They're not guidelines, they're actually design standards. We, as Bill mentioned, we have built in some flexibility into the design standards, however. As an example, we have a menu of acceptable exterior building features. So the, the three primary things that the design standards are regulating are building materials, architectural details, and window and door openings. So the building materials has a list of acceptable materials, and the architectural details, there's also a list of accept, of, of details that are acceptable. So we're not telling designers that they have to choose a particular material, we're not telling them they have to choose a particular design, we're building in some flexibility and letting them do their own work. The design standards are meant to apply to new commercial buildings citywide, and they're based on zoning. So our office, our commercial and our industrial zoning is our non-residential zoning districts. Bill kind of talked about this next point already, but the, the design standards are to represent a minimum standard, and what we're trying to do is raise the floor for those projects that aren't typically well-designed. So the design standards are based on building types, and there are three building types, A, B, and C. So A is our highest design review, and that's required in our office, our light commercial, and our downtown zoning districts. B is our medium standard, and that's required in our heavy commercial districts. B is likely to be the building type that is used most often. C is our, sort of our least design standard, and that is required in our industrial districts. So the requirements for a type A building, the building materials is 85%. So again, there's a list of building materials for a type A, they have to do at least 85% of that particular list of materials, and four architectural details, and 50% windows and doors. I want to point out that the building materials and the architectural details are required on the front of the building and the street side of the building. The windows and doors is a requirement on the front of the building. The windows and doors is a requirement on the front of the building. Type B is, I'm sorry.
Would you mind holding? Yes, Councilmember Emerson.
I'm sorry, but since all these will have those numbers, does that mean 50% of the front has to be a window or a door? Is that what that means?
Of the front facade, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So type B, it's 60% of the listed materials, three architectural details, and 40% of the windows and doors. You can see the standards are stepping down.
Councilwoman Heller.
If you could, your type A example is a Chick-fil-A restaurant. Your, your type B is a Walgreens, which in my head are the same. So what, what's the, could you talk a little more about the difference between an A and a B? What commercial, heavy is or whatever the, heavy commercial?
So our heavy commercial is our C4 zoning district. So Wanamaker, for instance, is where we have a lot of C4 zoning. So the Chick-fil-A technically would have been a B building type, but they, they designed to an A standard. So, does that help?
So heavy means a concentration of commercial rather than some sort of, some, whatever you sell?
Heavy means our C4 commercial districts and C3 and C4. That's what the heavy commercial is, C3 and C4.
Thank you.
We have a lot of C4 zoning in Topeka.
Councilman Emerson.
So would it be fair to say normally a type A might be like a medical building or something like that?
In our office districts, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And type C is again our industrial districts. The building materials is 60% of the type C building materials, two architectural details, 25% windows and doors. And again, the standards, they step down based on building type. Okay. I also want to point out a little more of our flexibility here through alternative compliance. So if a project is having trouble meeting the design standards, it has the ability to select from our alternative compliance elements in lieu of full compliance with the design standards. So for instance, enhanced landscaping. So that includes screening, a blank wall with some landscaping, adding a parking, landscape parking lot island beyond what is required typically for parking lots. They could, they could include more architectural details or windows and doors beyond what is required. They can reduce their signage on their property. Also, if they locate a building up on the sidewalk and have the parking to the rear, to the side, that is another sort of site credit that they can get to, to comply with the standards. So many of these alternative compliance elements are site improvement ideas. So improve the site to help the overall improvement of the, the development. Last thing I want to talk about is changes to the landscaping ordinance. So this includes increasing the overall quantity of landscaping by 20%, requiring a minimum of 50% of landscaping to be located along street frontages, the provisions to screen toll lots, contractor yards, et cetera, along the street frontages. The example I'm going to show you is a project that met the landscape ordinance. So it has all the landscaping that it was supposed to have, but didn't do a real good job of addressing the street with its landscaping. And we don't have the ability to ask them to, or require them to do that today. This particular example is a project that had more landscaping than was required, but also did a good job of addressing the street with their landscaping. So this is an example of what we're trying to get to with landscape design through the changes to the, to the landscape ordinance. So that is a summary of the building design and landscape changes.
Thank you, Dan. So Dan kind of gave you a good overview of the contents of what is in this. And so looking back on the process that we had, came a long way from probably where we started. But as, as I may have mentioned, this has just been on our radar screen for, for a long time. But with, this is very good timing now with what we did downtown to bring this forward. So with that, I will just, Dan and I will just stand for any questions at this point.
We have Councilwoman Clear to be followed by Councilmember Emerson.
Okay, two questions. Why is there a high standard and a least standard? Why isn't everybody held to the same standard?
Councilwoman Clear, so in our zoning district hierarchy, there are more sensitive zoning districts because they, this all falls back to, say, let's start in, in the office or the, or medical areas. Office is usually almost always going to be the transition between a residential area into a commercial area. So when you're near, nearer, closer to a commercial, to a residential area, those are very, much more sensitive. We want those to have a higher standard because that, that, that land use is not meant to be next to a, a higher intensity commercial or, or a lower standard building. So we want, so office, our neighborhood commercial, that's another, that's light commercial. That would be a higher standard. And then downtown, I believe, as well was, was the other, which, which should be. But when you get down to the lower standard, industrial areas are generally not around residential. They're usually embedded in very intensive areas, and, and they're not necessarily the best looking places to begin with. So we felt a lower standard was appropriate.
Okay. And you said in, if, if someone couldn't meet the standards in lieu of that, they can get these points. Does that mean I can't meet like the 50% windows in the front, so I would do more landscaping?
Correct. You, you have to at least meet one of those three standards. You can't just not, but the, when you, when you can't reach that bar, those, because some, I'll be honest, some buildings are just functionally, they, they, they may not want to have that. They may not want to have that open window look for, for, just because of the function of their building. And so that's where the architects and, and us, we realize, oh, we need to have another way. Because remember, the community's saying landscaping's really important here, not just your design, but, so the site became just as critical. So we thought that was a good trade-off if, if we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Emerson to be followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Feiner, first of all, excellent job on this. You guys, I think, have done a very thorough job and, and kind of vetted this with the people that are, it's going to affect. I did want to ask though, in kind of a follow-up to what Councilmember Clear asked, in the alternative compliance, is that going to be a formula? Is it going to be like a, I guess, as much as possible, I think developers would like to remove subjectivity from it and know their objective measures. Is that, is that how that would work?
Councilmember Emerson, actually, it would. We agree. I think the, the less subjectivity, the better. That works for us as well. It goes both ways. So we actually have probably a list of 10 or 12 alternative compliance elements. And then we also indicate if you cannot meet one of the required three elements, then you have to choose one of those 10 or 12 elements to comply with. So it's a trade-off. If you can't meet two of the elements, then you need two, then you need two of the alternative compliance. So it's a one-for-one trade-off. And so yeah, it is, it is, it is spelled out fairly detailed as to what that would be. Now, there's always going to be some subjectivity. Someone adds a, a, I think patios are in there, you know? We don't tell them how big the patio needs to be. We don't tell them, you know, what it needs to look like, but I think that's, that's where the design professional helps out.
It's, well, first of all, fantastic. But I'll just, I was, I was reading something the other day about the Eiffel Tower, and it talked about how people in Paris hated it when it was first built. So I appreciate what you said.
Good lesson.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excellent job. I love the creativity and the flexibility you built into this and the fact that they're clear, concise, and easy to understand guidelines. My challenging question for you is, what are you going to tackle residential?
Oh, Deputy Mayor. So this was our...
Change subject.
We, we are, yeah, so this is non-residential.
Sure.
But this would include institutional uses. Now, multifamily and I, I think, is that what you're referring to?
No. For the strict residential, we all know we need some sort of minimum standards for that. And I realize that this is a huge can of worms.
Right.
I just, I'm wondering, is that on your radar to do it all? Because I, I think we would all agree, we have to have something at some point.
The, from a citywide perspective, it is, it is not yet. We, we have design standards in our neighborhoods that have neighborhood plans. We have about 15 of those. But once you get outside of those areas, and by the way, those are only if, if the city has an incentive, can we make somebody do.
Sure.
But a private developer building a house, no. We do not have that on our radar at this point. Only those projects that have incentives from the city would, would, would we be able to apply a standard now? So I, I was hoping to get through the...
I think you've got an excellent foundation.
I'll tell you.
And I love the fact that you've got flexibility built in there. So I, this is a great way to build on, you know, a set of guidelines, but I think we get there because we're going to have to get there at some point, but.
And we're, right, and we're coming back with signs, of course, but commercial is important because that's what lines our major streets in this community. And so our corridors and our frontages are, are stringed with, with commercial and non-residential uses. And so I think that was the priority. But yes, if this, if this goes well, then, which we think it will, then we'll have to come back to the residential part and address. And we'd be glad to do that.
Before we proceed with the conversation, we do have one person signed up to speak on this item, and that is Mr. Glenda DuBois.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I am Glenda DuBois, and I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for Heartland Visioning and for the Greater Topeka Partnership. And I also staff two of the quality, two of the work groups within Momentum 2022 that speak to these issues. Number one is the Quality of Place Work Group, and the second one is the Community Engagement, Pride, and Service Work Group. So within those work groups, we are looking at options and opportunities to increase just the things we're talking about, the aesthetics and the beautification of our city. So we affirm these changes and updates because, number one, they're proactive. We know that there are some things that need to be done that will take years to change, but I think this is really, we believe that this is really a way to approach them in a proactive way for new construction that's coming on board. But also, it is very flexible, and it does not carry any penalties for those that are existing. So we think that that is very, very positive. We think that it will not only improve the beauti, and beautify our corridors and our retail areas, but it will also encourage people to come to Topeka. Those of us that are here will be willing to shop around. And also, with that being said, it will increase our economic development. So we appreciate it, and we think it's good work, just as you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw a hand about to go up. Councilwoman Heller.
Mine would have come up eventually anyway. Two questions for Bill. Okay. Couldn't find you. I too, I, process is so important on these things, as we know. You, your discussion of the, I have two questions. The first one is, has to do with the, the process. You said that the professional panel was architects. Is that correct?
That's correct.
After that processing, I mean, we all know that if we get complaints about zoning and development services, it's that it's tedious, it's, it's, you know, takes time, it's just judgment calls, all those sorts of things. And so vetting things like this as much as possible is really good. So was there, in the, in the course of those five planning commission hearings or otherwise, an affirmative vetting of this? We, we all know that architects don't always agree with builders and contractors. And so was it vetted with those professional associations and, and the folks in those industries as well?
Yeah, that's what the development forum was for. So we have a, a large group of, of all the development interests, builders and, and professionals in the city that we, we send that out to. And like I said, we had a very good showing. So I, I would vouch, from that standpoint, we did, we did reach out to a larger group other than just the design folks.
That's great. And from that, I mean, I don't know if this has changed along the way. What, what kind of feedback did you get at that development?
Just some questions. I, I don't think we ultimately, I, I think it was more changes that, from the questions that we heard, we, we made a few tweaks here and there in terms of being more clear in our wording, but we didn't, there wasn't any, there's nothing I can put my, my finger on necessarily that, that came forth from that to say, we need to do something different than what you're proposing. But we did do a few things different just because we did get some questions about what something means. And so when somebody says that, I mean, ah, that wasn't clear. So we went back and tried to clarify those sort of things.
That's great. We, we obviously don't have a room full of people worried about it, but always good to check.
Sure.
Second question would be backing up, if, if I may, to the visual survey, which I took too. But I don't, it's been a little while. And trying to remember exactly how the questions were phrased, I remember the pictures. But we all know that there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of hard work on the part of code compliance as well as forestry and, and other departments to clear brush and overgrowth off curbs and front of buildings, residentially and commercial and industrial. Did you get a sense for, you know, you obviously got this really strong and sort of unexpected priority for landscaping in the, in, in all those comments? Was there a sense that people were concerned more broadly, or was, were the comments really focused toward new construction?
Councilwoman Heller, we purposely focused on trying to show people new construction, new commercial buildings, the gamut. Some that we thought might rate poorly, some we thought would rate okay. We didn't really, and even in the comments, we didn't get into that, that property maintenance side. The images didn't really lend themselves to that. And we, we didn't, we didn't go that, that route. So it was really focused on just some, some newer construction, and some that were, that were, we knew would, would be somewhere in between, somewhere on either ends, and we wanted to see kind of how that, that shook out and whether people thought like we thought.
Okay. I mean, I knew you hadn't, but I wondered if they did.
We, we did not get as, you know, that, that was interesting. No, we didn't get the, hey, you know, the blight sort of thing where we're, where we're not looking, our neighborhoods are, are not looking good, or some comments like that. It was, it was, it was lasered in on what we were trying to get back. It really was surprising.
Great. Good work. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill, I think that would be important because I feel like the two go hand in hand. So I hope somewhere down the road, we can get there. You know, we have a lot, you know, I, I say this all the time, Sixth Street and 10th Street is the gateway from Lawrence, and it looks really sad when you go down the curbs and you got all this overgrown. You know, that looks really, really sad. And I know Mayor Button, he did a great job of, that drove him crazy, drives me crazy too. Number one, we need to educate whose job it is to get that all cut down. And even downtown, when we had that, and we were cleaning up. So I, I think the two go hand in hand. So I'd like to see us someday, don't just put it on the back burner, but implement it to see how we can, how we can do that. I think that's great what Karen brought up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, Mr. Feiner, thank you so much for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
And for the work that both of you did to bring this forward to the body. Before we move onto our second item, I will do a quick shout-out because I know that she's fading. My oldest daughter is sitting there in the audience. She typically comes and visits Tuesdays, and I drive her home, but today she was stuck with me. Because if you see, next to my daughter is one of my closest friends, one of my besties, Ryan Bishop, who, if you look at the Michelle for Topeka page, he has done a video, a photo documentary of a day in the mayor's life. So he's been the one responsible for all those pictures. So thank you for all your work. And Christina, thanks for putting up with all the work that I do. We now move on to item B, Neighborhood Empowerment. If the tour could read.
He has an update on the 2019 Neighborhood Empowerment.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have two items that are related. Sasha Han, Director of Neighborhood Relations, will go through them. I wanted to bring something up. It was mentioned to me at the beginning of the meeting and want to make sure everyone's aware of it. As I reviewed the requirements relative to the empowerment grants and the SORT grant, determined that... determined that the vote and approval of the governing body is not required on these items based on them being part of the budget already authorized. We use a process to review, an external review of these items, and so therefore, it wasn't a requirement. And I know that's a change, and I apologize if anyone didn't understand as we put that in the agenda items, but I want to make that clear. I look at this as being something that's within my authority to do, based on the way it's currently established. So we can debate that if you'd like, but if you have concerns over that. But as I evaluated it, I believe it was within the authority of the City Manager to approve those. So that's why it's not going to be brought at the next meeting for approval, because we've gone through the process.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, governing body members, good evening. Just a second here. Okay, this evening, I am going to give you a, an overview of the empowerment projects as well as the neighborhood that has been selected for the 2019 through 21, 2021 SORT program. Just real briefly, empowerment is a grant program that we offer to the neighborhood improvement associations. It is funded with CDBG program funds that we receive from HUD, and we offer up to $50,000 as a maximum grant award amount for projects annually. The total budget for that program is about $137,000. Our program priorities include citizen involvement and inclusiveness, project efficiency and effectiveness, and neighborhood empowerment. The projects have to be located in LMI, or Low to Moderate Income neighborhoods, and the program, this grant program is marketed to our NIAs. So in 2019, we continued our theme for the empowerment workshops that we offered and tried to invite as many community partners that our NIAs could partner with on various projects as we could possibly think of. You may recall, last year, we had some projects that included bike repair stations and bike share installation of bike share facilities in neighborhoods. So we're really trying to get the neighborhoods to kind of broaden their horizon in terms of projects. In addition to that, you'll recall that we've added a 50% funding match requirement for park improvements, and Shawnee County Parks and Rec would also have to sign off and approve any of those projects that were submitted for consideration. This year, we received five applications in total, and three of those have been selected for 2019. The two applications or neighborhoods that were not selected for 2019 can reapply for those projects, and we were sure to include this year in the communication that we sent to the neighborhoods, feedback from the committee, so that they can improve their applications if they choose to apply again next year. So the selection committee was comprised of five community members from various agencies and three city staff members. Included in your packet was an executive summary that listed who those members were from both the community and city staff. So for 2019, our three empowerment projects will be Highland Crest sidewalk installation and improvements. That project totals, and these are approximate numbers, $42,350. That's the engineer's estimate for that project. And this project will actually provide repair and installation of new sidewalk on Southeast Irvingham Street from Gerard Street to 34th Street. And I would also point out, on this one in particular, the committee actually added $7,300 in funding to what was requested to meet the engineer's estimate for that project. So just if you happen to look through that stuff and saw the difference, that's why. The committee was supportive of that additional funding. Historic North Topeka East was the second project that was selected, and it's a public neighborhood bike repair station that will be installed at 1201 North Central Avenue. And finally, North Topeka West's curb and gutter installation on Northwest Taylor Street, and this will be from St. John Street to Grant Street. And also noted in the packet on this particular project, the engineer's estimate was $61,450. I mentioned earlier, the grant cap for this program is $50,000, and Public Works agreed to pick up the difference so we could get that project done. So the map up there shows you where those projects are located. You've had the executive summary and a bunch of information in the packet, but I would be delighted to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Sasha. Do we have any questions from the body? Councilwoman, clear.
So we had, the total funding available was 132, and we recommend 94.
137.
So does that mean, what happens to the extra funding there that you have left?
The remainder would, we've got some options. The City Manager and I have talked about the possibility of using that as a one-time add for the NIA support fund. I maybe greedily wanted to reserve it for housing rehabilitation projects, because we typically run out of money for emergency repair program by this time of year. So that could be a couple more projects. But we've got some options. It would have to be used within the guidelines of CDBG funding, but.
That was my question. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Just in terms of process, I, for one thing, I love this packet. It looks like your process went well. I appreciate the disclosure with the application form and the team and the scores. It's really great. So.
Thank you.
Kudos. The question I would have is that on the, on the North Topeka West one, if the projects weren't supposed to cost more than $60,000, would it, I realize it's tough to manage these, but would it have even been eligible, really?
So in that particular instance, I mean, that's a, that's a complex project, right? So if the neighborhood says, hey, we want to apply for curb and gutter for this street, and then they get an estimate from the engineer that says it's $61,000, the alternative from the committee could have been to shrink the project, right? Right. But Public Works agreed to pick up the difference, so we were able to grant that entire request. Technically, yes, it, the project would have had to be scaled back to meet that $50,000 cap. But because we've got great partners in the Public Works Department, they are gonna help us make it happen.
No, 11 is not too bad. I mean, it's interesting when we go through this process, both with SORT and with empowerment, that neighborhoods are able to get things done in advance of when they might have otherwise rolled up. And so my guess would be this is pretty bad and was rolling up anyway. Do you know?
Oh, that is not my lane. I can't, I can't answer that.
Appreciate that. Just for a comment with the council, we have always voted on these before. We do that on the alcohol and drug grants and the social service grants. And I realize that legally, you could certainly get a legal opinion either way, but process-wise, we've done it before, and I think we should continue to do that. That's just my comment.
Additional comments or questions from the body? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I too agree with the process, that we've always done that. I can appreciate the City Manager bringing forth that we don't have to, but it keeps it before us, and it also answers any questions that we have. I think if we stop voting on it, then potentially, we can have it so it doesn't have to come before us, and they don't bring it. Maybe not you, but maybe the next City Manager. So I'd like to see the process continue. It's really not that hurtful. I'd also like to see, because I don't know how much you guys hear this, but I hear this all the time. We're, you know, our NIAs are losing more money and more money and more money and more things that they can do. And yes, staff has done a job of saying, yeah, we can, we can do this, or we can replace it with this. But we really need to see what the NIAs want. We really need to go with the newsletters of what they want, and that's one of the things that they want. They want money for their newsletters, because that's why we get the HUD money from the Low to Moderate Income people that live here. That's what, why it is. I've seen so much change, sitting in this chair and even before I sat in this chair. So I know things are changing, but we want people to help, we want people to invest in their homes. And I remember there was a program, the enhancement program, where you could volunteer your hours and you could get paid with your HUD funds. And that's how I got my steel doors, screen doors. And you, your volunteer hours turned into like $7 an hour, and people were fixing up. Our NIAs were booming. We had 30, 50 participant members. And it fell off because the city, and I was the president at that time, the city, none of the current employees, but they did not keep up on the books, and that got taken away from us. That got, you know, and so we started seeing volunteers fall off. We had people that were helping people with roofs, with painting, with, it was really, really a neat project. Haven't been able to bring that back. Some people don't understand it. But we could do whatever we wanted to if we, if we were to take that ordinance and bring it back. But we say we want people to invest in their neighborhoods, and we say we want people to invest in their communities, and we need to really listen to what they want, because our NIAs are falling, and I don't want to see them die. I think that's the heartbeat of Topeka, and I think that's what spins it around. Some people don't like to hear that. Some people don't, but there's some hardworking people out there. Mr. Don Perkins is right out there, that have brought a lot to it. I remember our NIA, and then I'll shut up, was the only one that had a van. We figured it out in the grant process, how to get a van for our community center. We were the only ones, and everybody wanted to know, how did you get a van? And as soon as they, we figured it out and we did it, they cut it off. So that's what I'm saying. It can be done. It's just one little word that changes everything. When you look at Samuel Jackson Park, all that was done by East Topeka NIA South, and even the Spray Park, by those stakeholders. So I would like to see us continue that, to keep our nose in it, to see what's going on in the process. Because if you don't go through their little, their little seminars that they put together, I'm not saying they're good or bad, I'm just saying if you don't know, then you don't know. And I think it's wise for us to be involved. Thank you.
Additional comments from the body? Councilmember, let's hear it.
Thank you. First off, wonderful job. Very good. Thank you so much. The only thing I would, would point out in regards to Councilwoman Hiller's request of putting it up to a vote, I would not, you know, normally have an issue fundamentally, and I still don't know that I necessarily do. The only thing that I would say that doesn't leave me leaning a little bit to supporting us continuing to vote on that is, is, for instance, we have a cap of $50,000 per project, and I certainly applaud our partners of Public Works stepping up and putting additional money in, and I think that's great. I don't have any problem with that. But to a certain, to a certain, to a certain extent, that kind of circumvents the system of us approving a $50,000 cap limit grant deal, where we did approve a budget, we did approve a CID, and then basically, in this case, we're taking money out of those entities to help finish these projects, which they're, again, great partners. I don't have any problem with that. My only issue is, in that case, where it's not clearly just the $50,000 cap on the grants and money's coming out of other areas as well, I think some consideration should be at least given to whether or not that's something that should come in front of the council or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We now move to item C. If the clerk would read.
C is an update on the 2019 to 2021 Stages of Resource Target Area for future federal and city funding.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Sasha Han will also cover this item for us tonight. Sasha?
Okay, so just a brief background on SORT. I think most of you are familiar. SORT stands for Stages of Resource Targeting, and the program was introduced to stimulate neighborhood revitalization, and it's a multi-year process for the neighborhoods that are selected. This program now includes $1.7 million in capital improvement project funding. Thank you very much for increasing that for infrastructure, and then an additional $330,000 for housing rehabilitation projects. In year one, the neighborhood that is selected works with the Planning Department to either update or create a neighborhood plan and establish target areas where those improvements that are funded will go. And then in years two and three, we kick off the design of the public infrastructure, and we kick off our housing projects in year two, and then year three is typically the build of the infrastructure projects, and we continue to work on housing rehabilitation. So that's kind of the schedule. The, obviously, the purpose is to enhance the quality of life in their, in our neighborhoods, and we measure our success of SORT through the health map updates. That's where we kind of gauge how well we're doing. Of course, these efforts would not be possible without all of the hard work and efforts that the council member referred to in terms of the volunteers. Mr. Perkins is here from the Central Park NIA, and he was very involved in their application, obviously, that was selected for 2019. So we're very thankful to have them. One process change that I feel like I've shared with you guys, but I might be making it up. We spent a, about eight or 10 months with the Planning and Public Works Department last year, really kind of mapping out our SORT processes. We did that in an effort to improve our own efficiency and the way that we work together through this, this multi-year project. What we discovered was that if we kind of reset how we are selecting neighborhoods, we could align the SORT projects with the CIP process, and that was very desirable for the Public Works staff, obviously. So what we have transitioned to doing is, rather than choosing two neighborhoods every other year, which has been the history of the program, we'll be offering those, that application every year to the NIAs, and we'll select one neighborhood every year. And I believe by 2021, we think we'll have it all synced up so that we'll be better aligned with that capital improvement project process and the budget approval for that. So that was the driver for that process change. It's a net zero change, though. The neighborhoods still, it's the same number of neighborhoods, we're just realigning when we select. So we advised the NIAs in February, the applications were available, and we held our application workshops in February as well. The applications were due in August of this year, and in September, the Citizens Advisory Council reviewed, scored, and then recommended Central Park NIA for the 2019 SORT target area. And that really concludes my presentation, but again, happy to answer any questions that you have about the selection or the process or the project.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sasha, originally, when this was set up, it was set up so that one year, they would, they could do it in a two-year phase, like two, Phase One and Phase Two. So whatever they didn't get in Phase One, that first year, they could come back and get the rest of it on Phase Two. So now that you're changing it, how is that going to work?
So I think that I, I know what you're referring to. This program started long before I got here, but my understanding is that Randy Speaker, who kind of was, it was his brainchild, his idea, from what staff's told me, is that within three SORT cycles, a date which would be approximately 10 years, right, nine years, a neighborhood could effectively work through most of its blocks, right? That was kind of the vision. So, but again, no guarantee that a single neighborhood would be chosen three cycles in a row to affect that, right? But the, the possibility for folks to work toward that goal still exists, because they can apply the cycle from, I don't know, I'm gonna butcher this, so tell me if it doesn't make sense after I say it. The cycle of how often they can apply doesn't change. Before, when we were selecting two neighborhoods every other year, those NIAs. those NIAs had to wait to apply until they were through the third year of the SORT project for their area. That part hasn't changed. So, although before we had two neighborhoods selected in a single year and then planning tried to work through that planning process all in one year, we're staggering it now, but the net result is the same outcome. I know.
Yeah. And then my next question would be, are we all caught up on the NIAs? Do they all have a plan? Because some of them didn't fit the criteria because they didn't have a plan. And I know...
So we don't require a neighborhood plan for neighborhoods to apply for SORT?
Okay.
They're not required to have one. If they don't have one, the planning department works on developing one with them.
So that's not part of their criteria or their points or whatever?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
In fact, they might get more points if they don't have a plan on the application. I'd have to look at it, but we're kind of targeting those neighborhoods to ensure that we get a plan in each neighborhood.
Okay. Well, and like I said, that's when it was originally set up. That's why they did it like in two-year phases. So whatever they didn't get the first year, they could come back and get it the second year. And I just wondered how that would work now, because there's only so much that they could get, so. That's confusing. Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions for Sasha? Councilwoman Hillary.
Thank you, Mayor. We didn't get the same information with this one that we did with empowerment. And I think it would be really helpful so that, you know, all of this is, generally, we have ten o votes and everything's fine and easy, but understanding the processing, having reference for it, is what helps us answer questions ourselves and if someone ever does challenge the process. And so, having the application questions, so we knew what people were asked for and who ended up. I think your process is really good in terms of how the CAC, it's the reps from the neighborhoods that are not competing for the money that get to do the deliberation. That seems to have worked well and be satisfactory. And I certainly don't have any question about the decision that was made, even though it's in my district, but even if it wasn't. That's fine. I just think that that full disclosure would be helpful for everyone. It just helps us all understand and protect the integrity and protect you guys as well and the neighborhood folks, that everybody can kind of see what was there. Once again, I think, again, often it is ten o votes. People have said that already today, but that's okay. Ten o votes are great. But that way, we make sure we keep it all current and cover you as well as the neighborhood folks. So, those, I think, are my only comments on this process. I would note, though, because we don't get asked about the programs, similar to how Councilwoman Ortiz made some suggestions, sometimes I have felt like we ought to keep the program, but let the neighborhoods do and update their plans first and then actually apply for the money with already in mind what strategic investment they have in mind and how it would change their neighborhoods. It's been a little bit of a frustration, we've talked about it, some here, that our property values aren't going up. I want us to tag-team that as much as we can. And perhaps a little more targeted idea of what money or what actions the neighborhood wanted to take before they even applied would help this money be more effective. Also, I know that a couple of years ago, thanks to Councilwoman Schwartz, we added a grants person to the city. And I think that at the time, part of what she had in mind was that that grants person would help. Things like where a neighborhood has an objective and maybe there's X amount of money available, but there are grants that could augment that, that we could go after at the same time as we're working out how the city money would be spent. And so, it's just a thought to consider for the future, not a change for this year. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for your presentation. We now proceed with announcements. If the clerk would read.
I'll read a few of the items that we're looking at for the agenda. We have a presentation on the 2018 utility systems. The action items would be the NRP, Public Hearing and Ordinance Adopting the Plan, ordinance amending the landscaping and screening standards, ordinance amending the non-residential design standards, ordinance repealing the Cyrus Hotel 1% CID sales tax, ordinance authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings for Soldier Creek Booster Pump, Teamsters Labor Agreement, and also a resolution setting a public hearing date for Acquarian Acres subdivision number nine street improvement project, which is the beginning of the special assessment process for them. Non-action items will be a discussion on the clean slate day, a report from the judge regarding the successes they had there. So, some of the items that we had tonight, basically moving in two weeks for consideration. A few other announcements tonight. We have a few spots left open for the Bob Yap Historic Window Workshop hosting by the planning department. The workshop is November 8th through the 10th. You can sign up on the City of Topeka's website. Neighborhood Relations Citizen Advisory Council will have its first neighborhood celebration event on Saturday, October 27th, from 11:00 to 6:00 at Cushion Berry Park. There will be free food, music, parking, and activities for kids. And also, the first ever Landlord Expo will be on October 27th. It's an exciting event that's been planned by the Neighborhood Relations Department. Also, there is a neglect building registration survey on the website. If you're interested, please consider taking that survey for us and helping us out there with your opinion. Also, a comment today was announced, the 21st and Kansas intersection is now open. Project was completed early. It was to be completed by November 2nd. Sided for the good work that our staff and Amino Brothers did in getting that open sooner. We appreciate that. And if you're interested in the Landlord Expo, you can contact the Neighborhood Relations Department, Monique Quade, 785-368-4470.
Thank you very much. How about that? Early completion, 21st Street. Woo! Thank you so much to Public Works and our partners. Just wanted to let everybody know again, if you go to Facebook on Michelle for Topeka, which is the mayor's page, there you could see the whole day. I was laughing because I'm looking and it's like, yay, we're past 12 hours. And I still have a sense of humor, bad, but I still have a sense of humor. Wanted to thank the council members and the staff that were there at the League of Kansas Municipalities meeting this weekend for all of their support and the sponsors that made it happen. It was a great conference. We had, the City of Topeka was very well represented over there. Thank you, Councilmember Mays. Thank you, Councilmember Emerson, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Padilla, Deputy City Manager and City Manager. And we had Bob Sample and other individuals there. So it was great to walk around and it's just like, hey, we're all here. Want to thank Councilmember Ortiz. She put me on the spot. We had Coco on the lawn. And she had me talking Spanish and she was testing me because she was telling me to say things to the community, but then she was just like, "I know exactly what you said." And also say thank you to the individuals like Blue Cross Blue Shield, who are amazing partners in our community and just joined our domestic violence task force by starting the whole group that is going to work with the private sector to ensure that private sector organizations that want to have a program to identify domestic violence victims and to identify how they could provide not only support for them, but also for the perpetrators of domestic violence could receive support as well. And that's how we end the cycle. So, that's all for me. Councilmember Padilla?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was in receipt, and I'm sure the rest of the council has, of a news release regarding our Topeka Police Department. It's pretty lengthy, but I think it's significant. So I'm just gonna hit the highlights. Last week, they had the International Association of Chiesa Police Conference in Orlando, Florida. And there were about, I think, 50,000, I think it notes in here, of law enforcement personnel. But the TPD was recognized in three ways at the conference. It was first recognized for its work with the Department of Justice in their strengthening police and community partnerships program. And as part of this recognition came with a video that the DOI, Department of Justice, I'm sorry, put together, which has, can be viewed, and there's a link that's provided. Secondly, the department was featured as an agency, thanks to the support of the recognition of the IACP. And part of this recognition came with the opportunity to put together a video that would tell the story and mission of not only the Topeka Police Department, but the City of Topeka as a whole, which I think is significant. And thirdly, the department's own Sergeant Matt Cobb was a keynote speaker at a conference and he had the opportunity to showcase Topeka's hiring and recruiting efforts. And I know we've talked about that before, about the efforts that the department is taking to diversify its personnel and to work hard to bring quality personnel to the Topeka Police Department. So I think it's significant that they got that recognition from a very highly regarded law enforcement organization of the International Association of Chiesa Police. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
So, I'll echo your comments on the league conference. It was very informative, learned an awful lot, especially interacting with other council people and other communities. I almost think we learn more in those networking environments where you can bounce ideas off of other people and ask them how they solve problems similar to ours in their town. Just a fascinating weekend, despite the fact that it rained nearly the whole time. If we're gonna be inside, we might as well be inside with other folks at the league event. Fantastic week. Oh, I'm to tell you all that the baby is no longer the size of a weasel. We've upgraded.
Weasel.
I thought ferret, but, come on, we'll upgrade here.
Honey badger.
Atlantic puffin. No idea who names these things. Brendan, maybe you could give them a hand with this, because this app is just, I don't know. Anyway, have a great week, everybody.
Councilwoman Mays declines. Councilwoman Cohen? Councilwoman Lesser? Councilwoman Hillary?
I'll speak. Kudos to the Police Department on the handling of the President Trump's visit. Obviously, things went very well and I think that's great. Thank you, everybody that represented us at the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference. It's great to hear the reports. I would note, Mayor mentioned Blue Cross Blue Shield. They also underwrote the Bike Fest, which is pretty cool. So it's nice to see companies stepping up in various ways. And it's interesting because they're committed to health. And we heard about that at the beginning. That's nice. I wanted to give props out to the street department. We have had problems with runoff at the corners of Fourth and Fifth Street on both Clay and Fillmore, even after the street redos occurred a couple of years ago. And they went in and did a substantial amount of work on all four, but the reports from the neighborhood are there was no standing water in the last few days. Boom, got it. And appreciate it from Water Utilities as well as Street for getting that done. There's good news about train rail service. We talked about that just a little bit before we got a news release somewhere in the last week or so, that Congress did go ahead and fund the Southwest Chief for another year in the same level that it's been before. That still requires vigilance and I appreciate the mayor and the city manager taking steps and communicating about that. And I think four of us, the mayor, city manager, and Councilwoman Padilla and I will be at the Oklahoma-Kansas Rail Summit here in Topeka, being hosted here on Friday. So, that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hillary?
My most exciting thing of the week was going to the zoo. And if you haven't been to the, let me get this right, it's a rainbow lorikeet. A little rainbow lorikeet. And you go in and you hold this nectar and all these birds sit on you and peck at you. It was so fun. Next, I was remiss last weekend in saying that Loulak went nationwide on the Good360.org because of promoting socialization and independence with the seniors by donating clothes. And it helps build their self-esteem. There's a very nice article, if you'd like to read that. And I need to announce that sole reason is bringing Nathan Harmon. He's the number one book speaker across America for schools. And we're bringing him here and he's going to talk to Topeka High Washman World Seamen at no cost. But we're also offering a public event on November 15th at Hayden. Now, he talks about suicide, bullying, drugs and alcohol, and bad choices through his life experiences. And he is one dynamic person. So this is a free event for the schools and the public. Save that date. Thank you.
I too would like to thank the Topeka Police Department for doing such a fine job. That was a tough crowd to handle. As the fire chief takes the podium, I'd like to request that the fire chief please take the podium. It is October month and he's sitting down on the job. City manager, can you have a word with him, please, about sitting on the job in October? I would like to thank the mayor and Councilwoman Hillary for coming to Coco. It was a very nice, beautiful night, 82 degrees. It was awesome. We had 87 people that showed up. I did learn that the mayor is really a little kid. There was a little boy there, probably about, what, four or five, and she played soccer with him. And then she made him scoot over and lay down the blanket with him the whole night. I thought she was gone and she was laying there. His grandmother is a personal friend of mine and she said he could not stop telling his friends how he spent the evening with the mayor. So we do make a difference, believe it or not, we do. But he was just ecstatic that she didn't know how to play soccer and that she laid on the... Fire chief, can you tell them what's happening this weekend and what's happening this month? You got a word for us? Because I have no literature. You know, I've sat in this chair for 13 years and I've always had literature at the beginning of October and I have nothing to hand out to my colleagues. And I'm kind of upset about it. So I'm gonna let you have the light and next, not next Tuesday, but the weekend after that, I will be looking for my materials to hand out, my stickers. What's the word this year?
This is, October's Fire Prevention Month. And this is actually Fire Prevention Week. It started last Saturday and will end on Sunday, this coming Sunday. We have our open house at the fire department, starting at noon on Saturday. Memorial service followed by the open house.
And the theme this year?
The theme this year is, listen and learn.
Listen and learn. Okay. So all are welcome?
All are welcome and there will be hot dogs there for those that...
For Mr. Henderson? Yep.
More than one.
Okay. Well, thank you. This is my favorite time of year to get those smoke detectors out. I do have to say this, you know, the last time I ran around and the city manager gave out applications, the city, our news guy, 13, he turned his in. There were several of the media that turned theirs in. So, it does work. So, thank you, chief. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, tell the guys they're slipping. It's the first part of October, we gotta get the word out.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Emerson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't top that, but I would like to echo what our city manager said about 21st and Kansas. Want to point out, it wasn't, a short story I saw on the CJ Online at least earlier. It's probably gonna be expanded later, I'd imagine, but it just said it'd been closed for six months, but it didn't really acknowledge the fact that it's actually an early opening. And I just wanted to point out that that doesn't happen by random chance. Couple of years ago, when Dr. Peak was new, he was getting a lot of flack, and some of it was coming from me outside the public sphere here, that utilities were killing us. You start a project and you hit a gas line or a cable TV line, something. And Dr. Peak, at that point, promised all of us that he was going to implement a program. And I'll tell you, about a year before this project started, I saw AT&amp;T was out there moving their stuff, Cox was moving their stuff, and the gas company. So, my hat's off to Dr. Peak. It's paying dividends, your program, so, thank you very much.
That concludes all of our announcements. We now proceed with public comment. We have one individual signed up to speak, Brian Brewer.
Forgive me. Times 10, times 20. 29th and Wanamaker, 10:15 at night, police officers investigating a gunshot. Why do you want me to cooperate with you when you treat me like that? I know you guys are praising them right now, but had I had a gun... I know you guys are praising them right now, but had I had a gun in my house, I would have not used it, but I would have brandished it in front of the door to let them know I did have a gun and [bleep]. My biggest problem right now, that's the only word I'm gonna use. I just want you guys to know how enraged I am right now. Okay? The woman that this happened to, who leases this apartment, is intimidated to be here. This standoff took 54 minutes. I got it all recorded. We got the beginning on video, the end on video. We did not put it on Facebook or anything. I am coming to you tonight to ask you, to plead with you before Topeka dies, to stop this. Don't allow them to run around bullying people because there's a gunshot. I don't want gunshots in the neighborhood. They don't want gunshots in the neighborhood, nobody does. But don't come up pounding on my door. Don't come up pounding, demanding anything from your citizens. Ask them politely. I would not be this upset had they come up and, excuse me, we want to talk to you. They came up demanding to come into our home to see a screen that had a hole in it that had been there for a year. We took 54 minutes to try to convince them that this hole had been there for a year, they had no business in the apartment, that we weren't even home at the time of the incident. And not only weren't we listened to, they piled up at the door. At first, it was two officers, and then it was four. Finally, there was eight. I called my sister because I felt it escalating. I called her, I asked her to come out and speak on my behalf. And she did, and she got the tone down. But after the fact, after we even let them into our house, after this coercion and this bullying took place, I don't know if it was the department or an officer acting on his own accord, decided to call the woman's landlord. Now, you were way, way out of line. I mean ridiculously out of line. Now you're messing with somebody's basic human right over something that has not even been convicted or not even technically investigated because I didn't see a single detective out there. All I saw were uniformed officers. So I don't know how to pose my question or anything to you. All I want you to do is please, please convince these officers that when they are investigating, not to treat everybody like criminals, not to walk up to somebody's house pounding at the door at 10 at night. That is ridiculous and uncalled for, especially for the duration it went. I don't have the pounding on my phone, but I have the point where I come back and I start pounding on the door, telling them to stop it. I have the point where I'm yelling through the door, telling them, no, like, at this point, you pushed me. And then I don't have the point where Bonnie's outside talking with the people, but I have the point where they come back. I have it all, where there are six officers coming that need to investigate a one-year-old hole in the screen. And it disturbs me that it went to that length. I'm sorry if I catch you guys' attention too rashly or anything. I just, I need you guys to know how upset I was about the situation and how I'm sure you guys would feel had it happened to you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. That concludes the action items in the meeting. We do have a need to recess into an executive session. If the city attorney would please read the parameters.
Motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to contract negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Administrative and Financial Services Director Nikki Lee, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Assistant Budget Manager Ted Clemens, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Bonnie, we have heard the parameters of this executive session, not to exceed 15 minutes. Is there is a motion? We have a motion by the deputy mayor. We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. All of those in favor of recessing into executive session, please vote.
Are those in favor?
I know, I'm used to just the hands going up.
We have 10 yeses.
10 have been voting yes. We recess into executive session. We will take a five-minute recess before that. And no action is expected to be taken during this meeting. We have completed the executive session with no action taken. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.